Okay, we're ready, right Kathy?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the Waukesha County Council meeting for February 9th, 2021. It is 6:01 PM and we are meeting virtually. First thing is the roll call.
Red Brown.
Yeah.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Bird.
Here.
Todd Donovan. Todd Donovan. Ben Ellenboss.
Here.
Carol Frazee.
Here.
Kathy Kirschner.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please join me in the flag salute? Please present the flag. We have a couple announcements. The county is accepting applications for county residents to fill various vacancies on several boards and commissions. Check on our website, at the Waukesha County website and look at the Boards and Commissions tab. Also, tonight, I wanted to announce that the city of Bellingham has established a temporary warming center downtown at Depot Market Square. It's located on the 1100 block of Railroad Avenue in downtown Bellingham. It will be available as a warming site beginning at 5:00 PM today, so it's open now. And remain open 24/7 through noon Tuesday, February 16th. We want to make sure everybody knows that COVID-19 precautions will be required, including masks and social distancing while using the space. It'll be staffed by volunteers, so the city will be definitely commercial. Okay, I was in the middle of an announcement announcing a temporary warming site at the Depot Market Square. It was open at 5:00 PM today. It's open 24/7. It'll be open through noon on Tuesday, February 16th. And please be advised that COVID-19 precautions will be required, including masks and social distance. The site will be staffed by volunteers, so the city is looking to get signups for folks who want to volunteer shift. You can go to the site www.cob.org/warming. That's www.cob.org/warming. And that page will be updated as more details become available. But there's a resource out there in the community to go get warm during this cold weather. Any questions on that? From council members. Okay, seeing none. We'll move to the executive report. Just so you know, Executive Soodoo will not be with us tonight. He's in good health and great spirits after undergoing surgery on Sunday to have his gallbladder removed. We expect him to return to his usual schedule after the long weekend, after next weekend, and we wish him a speedy recovery. So I would just ask Mr. Schroeder, was there anything that the administration wanted to pass along during the executive's report?
Nope, nothing else to add unless council has some questions for the administration that can't be addressed later today.
Anybody have anything they can think of off the top? Okay, we'll move on. We have five sets of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Donovan moves. Kirschner seconds. Any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move into our public hearings tonight. The public hearings are being held virtually, being Zoom. At this time, would everyone please stop your video so Kathy can play the video how to, for people, how do they get on to testify?
Welcome to the meeting. For instructions on how to join the meeting to speak, please visit waukeshacounty.us/joinvirtualcouncil. Meeting information, including Zoom meeting link, phone number, webinar or meeting ID, and password are available under the meeting date at the bottom of the page. Members of the public may join the meeting online or by phone. The meeting is broadcast live and recorded. All speakers will have three minutes. When you've joined the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to request to speak. To virtually raise your hand online, click the hand icon at the lower area of your screen. To virtually raise your hand by phone, dial star nine on your keypad. Council staff will call on you by the name listed, or if you're joining by phone, by the last three digits of the phone number from which you're calling. When called upon to speak, click the microphone icon to unmute, or if joining by phone, wait till you hear a message indicating the host unmuted your phone. Please first state your full name for the record. Staff will announce when your three-minute speaking time is up. Camera sharing will not be offered at this meeting. Thank you for joining the meeting.
Okay, we have several public hearings tonight. The first one is AB 2021-051, which is an ordinance adopting countywide planning policies relating to the review and evaluation program, also known as buildable lands, and dispute resolution procedures. This, remember everyone out there in the public, these are specific to these items, so if you have testimony for something else, that'd be during open session. So do we have any staff report on this? Mark?
Hi, Council. Mark Personias with the Planning Department. These are just, these are the final policies required by the new buildable lands program in the state statute. One, to establish the program and to adopt a dispute resolution procedures. You approved these back in October of last year and asked us to forward those on for ratification to the seven cities. All seven city councils have now ratified and approved these, and so they're back for you tonight for final hearing and approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Personias. With that, any questions before we open the hearing? Councilmember Donovan?
Mark, how long, so when the process starts, this is just sort of setting up the rules for the process and all that. How long, do we have a deadline on when we have to get this all done?
The, the buildable lands program is, has to be adopted by the councils, city councils and the county council by June 2022. So we've got another year and a half or so. We should have a first draft this summer and then a year or so to get kind of final reviews and go through the entire, the rest of the public review process.
Any other questions? Okay, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will go ahead then and close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council?
Move.
For a second.
Brown moves. Donovan seconds. Discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Our next hearing is AB 2021-058, which is an ordinance adopting the temporary installation of stop signs on Deer Trail. Is there any staff report for this? Seeing, oh, go ahead, Jim.
Councilmember Buchanan, no staff report is ready, but I'm available for any questions about the situation on Deer Trail.
Okay, is there any questions before we open the hearing for Mr. Carter? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak, please click on the hand icon in the lower area of your screen or dial star nine if you're joining by phone. There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing and turn it back to council.
Move approval.
I'll move approval.
That was an awesome silence. Okay, it's moved by Bird, and I'll take that as a second. Councilmember Kirschner?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Next public hearing is AB 2021-075. It's an ordinance authorizing the closure of a portion of Fourth Street in Custer, Washington, related to the COVID-19 economic relief. Do we have any kind of a report? Jim, do you have anything for us?
Councilmember Buchanan, no, no formal report, just available for any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Then we will open, just, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on this public hearing item, please raise your hand virtually by clicking on the hand icon or dialing star nine if you're joining by phone. We do have one speaker, Larry McDonough. Go ahead, Larry, you have three minutes. Please state your full name for the record.
Yes, Larry McDonough, Bellingham, Washington. Regards to the request for closure of Fourth Street in Custer in support of Tony's Tavern. I want to encourage the council to all vote unanimously for this. As all of us here in the county know what's happening to our small businesses, and in particular, the smaller restaurants. They have been going through a tremendous financial struggle, and we all want to support them. We want to see their businesses back to a healthy place again as soon as possible. This is one way of accomplishing it with minimal impact to the community of Custer and a great amount of impact financially in a positive way for Tony's Tavern. So again, I would just ask all of you to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing, and council, what, what say you?
Move for approval?
Then moved and seconded. Frazee moves. Donovan by a microsecond is second.
I think Kathy might have moved, but I'm.
That's.
Okay.
Anyway, discussion. Councilmember Donovan?
I'll just say thanks for Ben and y'all for bringing this to us in Public Works for making it work, and it's hopefully something that's scalable beyond just this one spot.
Anything else? Okay, please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. We will move into our open session. As I announced two weeks ago, we try to keep this a family show, so we do not allow any profanity during open session. We know you're passionate about your, the things that you're testifying about, and we appreciate that. But we just ask if you would please not use profanity during your testimony. Remember, you can raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of the screen, or you can dial star nine to join. We'll go ahead and open the public session, and staff, is there anyone with their hands up?
Again, if you'd like to speak during the open session on any item, please raise your hand virtually by clicking on the hand icon or dialing star nine if you're joining by phone.
Is there a reason we're not playing the video?
Councilmember Buchanan, you were muted.
I was just answering Councilmember Bird. We just played the video, what, about five minutes ago? If council members want us to play it again, we can.
Maybe to prompt folks who are listening, just make sure everybody gets a chance.
Yeah, go ahead and roll it again then, Kathy.
Welcome to the meeting. For instructions on how to join the meeting to speak, please visit waukeshacounty.us/joinvirtualcouncil. Meeting information, including Zoom meeting link, phone number, webinar or meeting ID, and password are available under the meeting date at the bottom of the page. Members of the public may join the meeting online or by phone. The meeting is broadcast live and recorded. All speakers will have three minutes. When you've joined the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to request to speak. To virtually raise your hand online, click the hand icon at the lower area of your screen. To virtually raise your hand by phone, dial star nine on your keypad. Council staff will call on you by the name listed, or if you're joining by phone, by the last three digits of the phone number from which you're calling. When called upon to speak, click the microphone icon to unmute, or if joining by phone, wait till you hear a message indicating the host unmuted your phone. Please first state your full name for the record. Staff will announce when your three-minute speaking time is up. Camera sharing will not be offered at this meeting. Thank you for joining the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak?
First speaker is listed as Ashley, at Ashley Button Schoen. My apologies if I'm mispronouncing your name. And after that, we'll have HK Mobile. Go ahead, Ashley, please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Ashley Button Schoen. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Hey, I just want to thank the council and the, and staff Paul to do for sending both letters this week. Appreciate the effort. Unfortunately, the response hasn't been great from Governor Inslee, but I would just like to ask you guys to continue in your efforts, and hopefully we can, we can move forward on things quickly and get businesses open, get people vaccinated. So thank you for your efforts, and please continue. And we will continue to stay tuned on what you guys are doing. So thank you so much.
The next speaker is HK Mobile. Go ahead, HK Mobile, please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi there. Just a minute. Let me get rid of the sound. Just a minute, please. I'm almost ready. Okay. Hi there, Heather Cattad in here. Can you hear me, Kathy?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, county councilpersons, neighbors, and friends. I wish to appreciate our local efforts to work together to maintain our community health for all our people. And tonight, I'm especially thankful to learn that Bellingham, which is still part of the county, will open a temporary 24/7 warming shelter at Depot Market Square on Railroad. I'm confident that neighbors are bringing inside citizens right now to bringing them inside from the cold weather. This is truly good news, and that I hope that this will bring our community together. And I hope and encourage that those who are able, especially the county councilpersons, will be able to volunteer in person. And I appreciate the past years each of you has volunteered at warming centers. I'm also sad for our community, especially this winter. As I've been aware of how many more people are left outside without shelter, without a safe family. I was at the Lottie Street Camp late the night before the January 28th operation. I was assisting citizens who were attempting to pack and depart before an upcoming sweep. May we respect each human being, and may our divisions be healed. May each person have the freedom and the safety to share their voice and to experience safety when they need to lay down to rest. I've met and listened to many of my neighbors who were unsheltered living outside, who are humble, strong people, who share what they have and receive only what they need. I've not been able to find some of my neighbors that were forced on January 28th from their simple tent or pallet home shelters while being surrounded by hundreds of community members, including armed law enforcement. And as videos have shown, humans with assault weapons on rooftops while loud helicopters were overhead. I understand the timing decision was made by a team of staff. I don't understand why a contract to create another emergency tiny home shelter has been delayed. I understand concerns of safety continue while the reality of healing from trauma post-January 28th operation continues daily. Each day, there are citizens who lay down at night, not knowing if they will wake up surrounded by guns, strangers, and news helicopters filming them. The trauma experienced each time a neighbor is forced to leave where they have been resting and sleeping is immense. I'm thankful for the current privilege to experience safety when I lay down to rest. I'm thankful to have shelter from the strong elemental effects of rain, snow, and wind.
Heather?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
If anyone else would like to speak during the open session, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon in the lower area of your screen or by dialing star nine if you're joining by phone. The next speaker is Marcus D. Go ahead, Marcus. Please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, it's Marcus D. Stidham, and I'm out doing outreach tonight, trying to spread the good news that there's a warming shelter in town. And having some successes there, definitely, of course, taking everybody by surprise, so I hope they get good usage tonight. I'm just parking the truck. I really appreciate the bold move that it took to provide the shelter. I appreciate it. And I want to, I just want to openly thank you all for whoever had any part of it. And I also want to recognize the need for more and more and more, of course. We certainly don't need little stopgap solutions. Right now, we have a situation where for the next one week, we've got an opportunity for all of these different, all of our different care providers and providers of all different nonprofit, homeless-related nonprofits and care providers, please make these connections this week. It's, it's so important, you know, you can maintain these connections, but it's when, when, when they're out there being in sweeps or whatnot, it makes it really difficult. And the trauma is real, as you just heard Ted tell you. So I encourage you all to keep following through to see this group, to see this group as they come in to be warmed by your fires, to be by a secular, non-church-related shelter that allows you to come in. And, 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 you know, is anybody's behavior going to be any different? I, I, I hope everybody behaves themselves and takes good care. And I, and I, and I trust a lot of these people that have that in their heart, and it doesn't take very many to make things bad, but I trust also that there will be proper management too. I thank you all for your participation. I, I, I'm out driving around, like I said, and trying to round people up and give them the news, and they are getting the news. So this, this is really good news. It is very welcome. Of course, there's a lot more people out there. I don't even know what the capacity is at this shelter, but it's, it's, it's a great boon tonight, and I just can't thank you enough. So on that, we rest for now, but please, let's push. Let's think about this. These tiny home shelters are available. There's 100 of them available to be put on your lot within three days, the last communication that I had from pallet shelters. Great operation. They can, they can have them installed on your lot, turnkey. So consider the stabilization that we can get out of this. There's a lot of solutions still coming out. There's a lot, I presented a pretty good solution. It should be in all your email boxes, so I shouldn't have to harp on that too hard. Should be a matter of record. And if anybody else has a better solution, please, oh, please, put it forward. I appreciate your ear with it, and I, again, I applaud this next move. It's time to stop the sweeps. It's time to stop that nonsense. It's time to bring them in. Time to welcome them home. Quit chasing them around with all that money and all that effort and all that trauma. Thanks.
If anyone else would like to speak during open session, please click the hand icon to raise your hand virtually or dial star nine if you're joining by phone. There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. We will close the open session, and we will move to Finance Committee and Councilmember Brown.
You caught me a little bit off guard there, Mr. Buchanan. Waukesha County Finance Administrative Services Committee met today, considered several items, the first of which we had the Cancel Consent Agenda, which is items one through nine. These all received a vote of 3-0, and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion in front of us. Discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
No.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes. That motion passes 6 to 1 with Councilmember Ellenboss opposed.
The next item was item AB 20, sorry, AB 2021 dash 4049, Request Authorization of the County Executive to Enter Into a Contract Amendment Between Waukesha County and the Henry, and Henry Hollander to provide facilities management and support services at the COVID temporary housing facility in the amount of 20,000 for a total amended contract amount of 60,000. This received a vote of 2 to 1, and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion. Discussion? Councilmember Donovan?
So I'm, I'm, let's start. So we, we the, the agenda item, I think, is out of sync with what I'm looking at. So which, which number are we on right now?
AB 2021-049.
We're on the, so that's not on the consent. Are we supposed to go on a consent? I might have this.
No, we're, we're on other items from council.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to call Devin, get it to bring you a copy.
So did. It's T.
It's T. Okay, discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
That passes 4 to 3 with Bird, Ellenboss, and Kirschner opposed.
Next item up was AB 2021-052, request authorization of the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watkins County and Lighthouse Mission Ministries to provide oversight and assistance at the COVID-19 temporary housing facility in the amount of $103,088 for a total amended contract amount of $476,000. This received a vote of 2-1, and I say move.
Discussion on this motion? Please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That motion passes 5 to 2 with Bird and Ellenboss opposed.
Next item was AB 2021-053, request authorization of the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watkins County and Pacific Security to provide security services at the COVID-19 temporary housing facility in the amount of $79,425 for a total amended contract amount of $278,972. This received a vote of 2-1, and I say move.
Discussion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
That passes 5 to 2 with Bird and Ellenboss opposed.
Next one was AB 2021-067, resolution canceling uncollectible personal property taxes. This received a vote of 3-0, and I say move.
Discussion. Okay, let's vote.
Kathy Kirschner?
All right, yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Next item was AB 2021-074, ordinance adopting amendments to Watkins County Code 266, county-owned vehicles. This received a vote of 2-1, and I say move.
Okay, we have that motion. Discussion. Please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
I was trying to, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
So that on Legisstar, there's the proposed ordinance, the proposed red line ordinance, the proposed clean ordinance, and I think they're all the same. At least, that's what I'm seeing on Legisstar. I don't see a red line version.
Yeah, Senator Schroeder, Deputy Executive, I noticed that earlier this afternoon, Councilmember Donovan, I did confirm that the clean version is the updated version that has the edits.
Other discussion? Other discussion?
The clean version is what we're voting on, just.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
Yeah, I guess I'm working off a paper copy here, and I don't even see what we're talking about here. I don't see it in my, what's the number on it one more time? The 2021 number?
074.
And I don't have the paper. I just, I've got Legisstar.
Okay, I see it now. Can you give me two minutes here? Well, carry on.
Other discussion? You want us to give you a minute, Ben? That's not a problem. Councilmember Donovan?
I just, so proposed ordinance clean and proposed ordinance are the same thing, Mr. Schroeder? Just to make sure we know what's going under the record here. I mean, I.
Yeah, that's what I saw this afternoon. So if council members take a look at the proposed ordinance on page four, lines 23 through 26 is really the meat of the change. And what it says is non-employees may only drive county vehicles if approved in advance and in writing. And all authorized non-employee drivers must have a driver's license that meets Watkins County standards and must agree in writing to fully comply with Watkins County's driving policies. There's a couple of other edits that refer back to that, but that's the main change of this proposed ordinance.
A question for, I guess, Mr. Schroeder in Public Works, would this allow Tyler Bird to drive the line stripe like he wants to?
Councilmember Bird, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, right. I thought you emailed last week and kind of your question's answered. The, so Tyler, maybe you could answer me. Why has this not been done in the past? Why was there a law or in place previously that required? Well, I mean, that people couldn't.
Yeah, so, you know, it really, it was actually brought to my attention. I had always thought that we were able to have contracts with other entities, ensure that there was language kind of passing the liability and responsibility of other contractors to be able to utilize county cars in some situations. In the references that we referred to, we became aware that the ordinance actually says that we can't do that. So it was kind of a clarification to bring forward to clean that up. And what it would allow us to do is to work with contracted entities, ensure that the contract has language in there that that entity would be responsible for the liability and for the coverage associated with it. And there's a couple of examples of where it goes. I'm not sure why a 1980 ordinance didn't allow for it at that time, but it just, it probably wasn't an option back then.
Okay. I've had a lot of government contracts, and I've never had one where I was allowed to use their vehicles. I've always been required to have my own vehicles through the company for our use and then have our staff insured appropriately and the company insured appropriately. What is the reason, I guess, or I guess my question is, can you give me examples of other jurisdictions that are doing this and what is, how common is it?
You know, I can see that this would probably not be the standard. In most situations, you're correct. We would be contracting a long contract for, larger contract for service and would have a contractor, construction agency bring vehicles to the contract that they have. There's been a couple of circumstances, whether it's through C-MAR or Grace or other opportunities where community partners just don't want to invest in the money upfront to provide those type of vehicles, and we have some vehicles in our fleet that could be utilized for it. And so that was kind of the one-off situations, ensuring the risk and liability is covered. Working with the prosecuting attorney's office, we'll be working on the contracts and the driver protocols. As it relates to other examples, I don't have those off the top of my head from other examples and jurisdictions, if they allow this in certain circumstances.
So if we're signing a contract with a vendor and that contract requires that they have transportation to get their staff to a site to do a project to fulfill the contract, but they don't have the vehicles and the equipment to do so, is it usual that we'd supply them that equipment? Or should they be allowed to even bid on that contract if they don't have the equipment necessary to fulfill it?
No, in that situation, the bid would require it, and the contractor's response to the bid would have that, would have their own vehicles. So that this ordinance change wouldn't be applicable in that situation.
So these aren't people that are using the county vehicles to fulfill contracts that they've signed with us. It's for other?
Well, prior to the contracts being signed, we would have an understanding that there's an agreement that they could use a county vehicle in certain circumstances. So an example is WTA just gave us a free bus. They had a transportation van. My Killian van, excuse me, not a bus, Mike Killian, the EMS needed it for community paramedic work. We work with City Bellingham, we work with C-MAR, and we work with other entities to be able to provide some of those community services. In working with a company, say C-MAR, they indicated that they didn't want to invest in additional resources or van equipment for the purpose, but they'd be happy to provide a driver. Since we had in our fleet a van that could accomplish the community need, C-MAR, the contractor, had the employees to accomplish it. We feel like it's a good situation. Risk is understood, and it makes sense to contract in those situations. What we didn't have was an ordinance that allowed us to do it. And so it seemed like a fairly straightforward opportunity to come to council, let them know that there are situations where this arises, and we would like that flexibility, ensuring that the risk and liability is covered moving forward.
That's a good answer, Tyler. Thank you. Last question. Liability. We'll have insurance requirements. What happens if they get into a massive pileup that's caused by them on the freeway or something, and it exceeds the insurance requirements of the contractor or agreement?
I think it's still on their insurance because they're required to have the insurance, and they have the driver's insurance associated with it.
Okay. The county wouldn't be cared out. Pierces them and hits us, and that we become liable or get tied into the contract as additional?
I don't believe so. We could go down that path, but I'm not sure. I know the actual answers off the top of my head, Councilmember.
If Karen Franks is on, I'm curious what her take would be on that. That's my last question. Thanks.
We can't hear you, Karen.
Oh.
Now we can.
Now we can.
Okay. I'm guessing these contracts have indemnification provisions which require them to indemnify us for any damages caused by their negligence. And in that case, that would protect us from any damages that exceed their insurance policy.
Thank you very much, both of you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Schroeder, in an example you used of C-MAR, is your belief that the cost, the net cost to the citizens of Watkins County would be lower if we lent them a vehicle than if we asked them to either buy or rent in a vehicle for that small portion of the contract where they need it?
Yeah, that's correct.
So I think this is a good cost-saving measure.
Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, I think I can see the benefit of, just like Councilman Brown was saying right there. But I guess what the thought that's going through my mind is, Deputy Executive Schroeder, is that, do you have, I'm assuming that you had a hand in writing this. So what in here protects the county from this growing into an expectation in the future that we provide vehicles for certain things that it just turns into the norm that we're now, you know, buying a vehicle and having the bill versus having people bid contracts so they come with their own equipment?
Yeah, I would just say that there's been no direction to staff that are going out to bids and putting the requirements out that they'd be able to utilize this type of situation. So any bid opportunity is still going to require the companies to come forward with vehicles when it's needed. So again, this is really, it's kind of, I would say, more the unique situations and not the norms. And it has to be approved in advance prior to having it accomplished.
Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Bird?
Thanks. Yeah, the, that's one of my concerns as well, as Councilmember Ellenboss is. I don't want to end up becoming the thrift rental car for the county and all of our contractors and nonprofits, anyone else that needs it. The cost to us to have extra vehicles that we're maintaining and paying the gas for and the maintenance and the mileage and insurance that set in a lot, the majority of the time, is going to be incredibly more significant than us covering the mileage of an employee using their own vehicle through a contractor and working that into the contract, which is the standard. So the, yeah, I don't want to get in that place where you need a truck, you're coming to us for a truck. You need a car, like, hey, we're working a car. But Tyler, I do agree with the, hey, we have a bus. It's meant for these certain circumstances, and we're gonna have some people helping out. You might not work here. We need you to be able to use it. Or, God forbid, there's a major accident. We have a bulldozer, and someone at BP is able to get in there and clear some stuff, and we are able to allow them to do it. So I'll vote, I will be voting for it, yes, because I see that value. But I would like to see any contracts that come forward where this might be the case, that it's explicitly noted what the vehicles are that they might be using and why, so we can keep that kind of under control, and we know what that understanding is moving forward utilization.
Any further discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
That passes 7-0.
Next item up was AB 2021-079, requesting authorization of the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watkins County and C-MAR Community Health Centers to provide oversight and assistance in the COVID-19 temporary housing facility in the amount of $95,460, the total amended contract amount, 3,000, sorry, $357,976. This received a vote of 2-1, and I say move.
Okay, we have that motion. Discussion. Councilmember Ellenboss?
Yeah, going back to the last item, I'd like to get my name on the list to use that tractor with the ditch mower as soon as I can.
You're off, Dan.
Okay, other discussion? Councilmember Bird?
It'd be nice that with each of these, there's a little bit of a different formatting. And so AB, item number one on here, it's for an amount of $60,000. Item number two is to provide an amount of $103,000 for a total contract amount of $476,000. The difference between the two is $60,000 for item number one is the total contract amount of the period of time. It's not reflecting the increase for this period. Item number two shows both. The item that we're on today shows the increase, but not the total contract amount. I think it's helpful for us as well as community members if we can include both of those numbers. Just moving forward, I think that would be nice. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Total contract, total amended contract amount for this one was $357,976.
Yeah, I saw that on the bill. I just mean in the title itself, so it's easy for people to see as they're reading through things.
Further discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner? Kathy Kirschner?
I'm sorry, yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes 5 to 2 with Bird and Ellenboss opposed. Mr. Brown?
I'm sorry, Mr. Beckett. I'm sorry, Mr. Buchanan. AB twenty twenty one dash zero eight zero request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Watkins County and the United States Department of Treasury for the rental and utility assistance for for other and sorry, other housing expenses in the amount of six million nine hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and eighty five dollars. This received a vote of three zero and I say move.
Okay, thank you. We have that motion. Discussion. Councilmember Ellenboss.
And I may have missed it and get the committee conversation, but have we landed on how folks are going to be able to sign up for this assistance?
If I recall, it was through the opportunity councils.
Yeah, time for Deputy Executive. Earlier today in the committee meeting, Andy can gave a little report and we anticipate an opportunity council contract and agreement to come to council at the next council meeting. A kind of laying out the requirements and how to take advantage of the opportunities. So that would be a good opportunity for us to get that word out to households that are in need.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Donovan.
That's what it's fantastic that we were able to get that these these federal funds and to kind of put it in perspective. That the obviously the COVID crisis is impacting people in terms of the ability to pay rents. This, I think, triples or maybe quadruples what we've been able to do previously with our rental assistance program. It's probably not going to be enough, but it's it's most welcome.
Any further discussion? Mr. Ellenboss and Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I just, I kind of want to echo what Councilmember Donovan's saying that this is from what I see, this is going to be the next big collapse when 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 all these folks who are renters are kind of called on that situation. And if we don't get in front of it, we're going to have a big, big problem on our hands.
Anything else, Councilmember Kerschner?
Yeah, I have to echo the great news that this is for people in our community. What I'd like to ask the Health Department and Opportunity Council to do are two things. One is to keep the administrative costs low on administrating this program. Like to see most, most of the money a huge chunk of it go to actually helping folks. And then the other thing is to make sure that there's some sort of safety network with built in with the contract that the landlords are getting the rent from the people who are affected. So just want to make sure that the money goes to the intent and purpose that it's designed for. And and I think it will. I'm not I'm not doubtful. I just wanted to put that on the record that those would be two things I'd like to make sure we see. Thanks.
Mr. Brown.
I'd just like to bring to the attention of the public, this is another example of how hard the county staff have been working to locate sources of funding for to assist our community. The staff health department, the administration have been pitfalls when it comes to identifying appropriate funding sources that will help mitigate the effects of COVID and and they deserve all the kudos that we can give them, so.
Councilmember Bird.
Yeah, Tyler, can we make sure that or is there any process yet in place so that we can make sure we're tying in all the waters, sewer districts that are out there and associations? So we can go back to that and make sure that anyone laid on those utilities that we're able to help them out specifically with the water and help out those utility districts at the same time.
I think it's a different program. There's a program through the CVBG grant dollars that are that are coming forward. It wouldn't be in this rental assistance and mortgage assistance program. But I we can get more information to you, Councilmember, on the on the utility support.
So this one says and utility assistance. So if it's not going to include water or sewer, which is kind of basic human need for housing, right? What utilities will it include?
It likely is through the through the occupant and the landlord, not to the utility itself. So it can it can pay for rent and utilities that are in that monthly payment. So I'll have to confirm that. We can have more dialogue about that when the contract comes forward through opportunity council. But my understanding is is that was catching any utility payments that somebody that's renting a house is paying to the landlord to then get paid. Not the actual landlord paying the utility itself. Does that does that clarification make sense?
Yeah, I understand the delineation between the two. Can we double check before that contract comes forward, the requirements of the program to see if it is possible and if it is possible we could get included into the contract before it gets back to us?
Yeah, I'll put it on the list to send to Ann Deacon so that when she comes back with the opportunity council contract, we can answer a couple of those questions as well as the thoughts that Councilmember Kerschner had.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, let's vote.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenbus.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
That passes unanimously.
Barry, we couldn't hear your vote.
Oh. Yes. That passes unanimously.
All right, next item up is AB twenty twenty one dash zero eight seven. Request authorization of the county executive to enter into a contract between Watkins County and Brown and Coldwell conduct phase two of the Lake Watkins Total Accident Daily Load TMDL reassessment in the amount of three hundred and three thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars. This received a vote of three zero and I say move.
Discussion on this motion? Please call a roll.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenbus.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Next item up was AB twenty twenty one dash zero nine one. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watkins County and Washington State Department of Transportation in the amount of two million forty seven thousand and sixty three dollars for total amended contract amount of two million one hundred and ninety seven thousand and sixty three dollars. This received a vote of three zero and I say move.
Discussion. Please call a roll.
Ben Ellenbus.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
That passes seven zero.
Next item up was AB twenty twenty one dash zero nine four. Request authorization of the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watkins County and Crossroads Consulting to provide consulting and facilitation services for the COVID employer support task force for total amended contract amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This received a vote of two one and I say move.
Discussion. Okay, let's vote.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
No.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenbus.
Yes.
That passes six to one with Councilmember Bird opposed.
Next item up was request authorized, sorry, AB twenty twenty one dash zero nine five. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watkins County and Elizabeth Boyle Consulting to provide strategic coordination of the COVID safer, stronger together campaign in the amount of twenty five thousand for a total amended contract amount of forty five thousand. This received a vote of two one and I say move.
Discussion on this motion? Please call a roll.
Kathy Kerschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
No.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenbus.
No.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
That passes five to two with Bird and Ellenboss opposed.
Chair, there was nothing further from finance.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We'll move to council appointments to boards, commissions and committees. First one is AB twenty twenty one dash oh three one, which is a council appointment to fill vacancies on the Business and Commerce Advisory Committee and the applicant is Brad Radar. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Need a second?
Got a second from Ms. Kerschner. Okay, Councilmember Frazee seconds. Discussion. Councilmember Kerschner. We can't hear you, though.
I'm reading Jill's email to Brad and it looks like we appointed him in January to be the food processing rep, but he prefers to stay as the egg sector rep. And so it looks like Jill is advising us to rescind our appointment to the food processing position and appoint him to the agricultural sector rep. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So I I'd make a friendly amendment to Councilmember Brown's approval to include that language.
To start with, the staff have that motion clear.
So we would rescind Brad Raider's appointment to the Business and Commerce Advisory Committee in the Food Processing representative slot and appoint him to the same committee in the Agriculture Sector Representative Spot.
Mr. Brown, do you accept that as a friendly?
Uh, no, and I'll explain why. So we we put him into the food processing slot in order to put somebody else in the egg slot. Mr. Raider believed that in doing so, we limited his ability to talk in the committee on food processing. And as we had a discussion about this at the last committee meeting and it was explained to Brad that it is the slot is only for how you get onto the advisory committee. It has no impact on what you're allowed to talk about. And and he was happy with that. So I believe he actually, unless this is very recent, I believe he actually effectively has withdrawn his request. It's my understanding.
I would, just for your information, refer you to the second page of my staff memo. There is an email from Brad and I believe Councilmember Brown, it was after that committee discussion where he does indicate he prefers to be the ag sector rep.
Yes, I'm just reading that now. Okay, well, the point is, is we've appointed someone into the egg sector.
No, that position currently is vacant. I believe Don Goldberg is recruiting applications for that position right now.
I don't think so. I think.
Councilmember Bird.
Yeah, we were going to, but then we put her in a different spot instead, which left farming open. You're thinking the honey, the person that had the honey, right?
Councilmember Ellenboss.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I think we were, we didn't know whether she actually produced the honey or just processed and sold it, something like that. But yeah, I don't quite understand Brad's concern here. I didn't talk to him about it. Sounds like Councilman Brown did, but I guess we should honor his wishes, I guess.
If I may, I have no objection if the slot is open. But my recollection, which could be faulty, is that we put someone in that slot.
So Jill, what happened to the honey, the honey producer?
I believe she went into I'm looking. I'll have to, I'm sorry, I don't have access to my files these days.
If I can just make a proposal, could we do all the other three and let Jill have a couple of minutes to answer this question and then come back to this one?
Absolutely. Can we just withdraw all motions and come back to it?
Yep.
Oh, I have that information. Here it is. You're you're thinking of Gail Buce?
I think so, yeah.
I think so.
Manufacturing position.
Please repeat, Jill.
Gail Buce, B U C E, was appointed to the manufacturing position.
Okay, so the egg position is open, correct?
Correct, yes.
Then then I withdraw any objection.
Okay, we'll go back to Councilmember Kerschner's motion. Yes, Ms. Kerschner.
Okay, so Dana just alerted me that the first motion should be to rescind our appointment to the Business and Commerce Advisory Committee in the food processing position. So we should rescind that first and then take a second vote on the next step.
And I would second that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
A motion to rescind a motion or is this the motion to appoint?
Rescind the original appointment?
Yeah, okay.
That's a yes, Councilmember Donovan.
That's a yes.
Thank you. Ben Ellenbus.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner.
Yes.
That motion passes seven zero. So Councilmember Kerschner, your next motion?
So I move that we appoint Brad Radar to the Business and Commerce Advisory Committee in the egg position.
Second.
Kerschner moves. Bird seconds. Discussion. Please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenbus.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
I'm gonna go, I don't know.
Wow, my computer just did something really weird. Okay. Let's go to the next one. It's just AB twenty twenty one dash zero four zero. Council appointment to fill vacancies on the Portage Bay Shellfish Protection District Advisory Committee. The applicant is Dory Belile. Do we have? So.
I said move to a point.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenbus.
I'm going to abstain.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes. That passes six zero with one abstention by Mr. Ellenboss. Next up is twenty twenty one dash oh four three, which is the council appointment to fill vacancies on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and the applicant is Brandy Hutton. We have a motion to appoint.
Do a point.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Frazee and Bird. Discussion. Okay, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenbus.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner.
Yes.
Red Brown. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Next is twenty twenty-one dash oh eighty-four, which is council appointment to fill vacancy on the Noxious Weed Control Board. The applicants are Dale Yoder and Alexander Bondrell. We have a motion to appoint.
Move to appoint?
Second.
Donovan moves. Brown seconds. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. And we have some items that have been added by revision of Councilmember Brown. Do you want to lead us through that one from your committee?
AB twenty twenty-one one one two was a discussion and request for the council motion to assist facilities management in selection of in-house or contracted custodial services for outlier buildings. This was a discussion that we held pending further information, which Mr. Nye has sent regarding sort of the long-term forecast for the cost. So I think I'm personally satisfied with the answers, but I'll leave it open to the rest of the council.
Other councilmembers? Councilmember Donovan?
For a motion, I would move that we approve the, I guess, option B on the memo that we had of converting the existing budget amount to three FTE positions.
I'll second that.
Donovan moves. Brown seconds. Discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Hey Barry, I got a question real quick.
Oh, go ahead, Ben.
So I remember, I remember the finance discussion, and is this proposed from now until forever, or is this like a two-year budget cycle and then it gets reevaluated?
Yeah, I would say that on the budget cycle, we'll be able to reevaluate. The estimate that, oh, sorry, Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. The estimates that we gave for a cost cycle analysis was a five-year timeframe. That's the contract timeframe that we had with Action Cleaning from two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty-one. So I think going into it, we were anticipating probably to at least have these custodial on staff for five years and then, and then we can reevaluate and ensure that it has provided some cost savings. But as always, Councilmember Ellenboss, as you know, through any of the budget cycles that we move forward, the biennial process, we could reexamine this if council so wishes us to do so.
Mr. Ellenboss?
Never mind.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes, and I remember my question now. So when we go, when we're done here, I'm gonna ask it if that's okay.
That's a yes. That passes six to one when Councilmember Bird opposed. Ben, your question?
Yeah, I guess I recall that we passed an emergency, like hiring freeze and this, that, and the other thing. Does, do we need to rescind that in order to hire three more people, or do we need to modify that in any way, shape, or form, or does that not apply in this situation?
Yeah, it's a good question. It was discussed a little bit at committee this afternoon. When we come, when the administration brings back the budget authorization, it'll also include the position hiring for the three positions. So we'll take that agreement from council as to be kind of an exception to the hiring freeze because there's going to be overall cost savings this year of about fifty thousand dollars on an annual basis, taking this option instead of the other. So with council's approval of the budget and the hiring or in the position control, that's all the authorization the administration will need.
Mr. Bird?
Tyler, how can we get some more information about the bidders and why or why not they were not selected?
We have that background information. Rob Knight facilitated it, and there's a little bit of information on the scoring and the criteria. Remember, this is no low bidder opportunity. This is a RFP RFQ with criteria. So there is scoring criteria that's laid out that is actually in that document that Rob sent earlier today. And, and, and so, but we could provide that background of the seven bidders if you would like to see it, Councilmember Bird.
Yeah, I would. I see the scoring, and that's what brings it up, is we're giving five percent of the score to the cover letter and ten percent to the executive summary. I mean, those are nice, but fifteen percent of your score goes to how well do you write those two pieces versus what's the cost and your client's references? Only ten percent is going to the cost, right? So it's kind of throwing me off and seeing that the low bidder was four pointer, which is a couple of points lower than the highest bidder. So they were the second runner-up, and the difference, I mean, they're a couple of thousand dollars over right now at one ninety-two versus the two fifty. That's pretty substantial, right? And so I'd like to, yeah, understand that.
We'll provide you that background information and it'd be a good opportunity to walk through it with you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to an item added by the administration, A B twenty twenty-one. Did you have a question, Ben?
I think you were hitting it.
Oh, okay. A B twenty twenty-one dash one oh six, request confirmation of county executive's appointment of Catherine Smith and Grant Helton to the Point Roberts Community Advisory Committee.
Move to confirm?
Brown seconds. Discussion? Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, I got positive feedback from the folks that I talk to fairly regularly at Point Roberts. Both of these individuals have been engaged and have been showing up to all the meetings, even though they're not currently on the committee. So I think that's a good thing.
Anything else? Okay, let's vote on it.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Abstain.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bird abstaining. Another item that was added by the administration by revision, and that is A B twenty twenty-one dash one seventeen, which are letters sent by the council with time constraints noted as other business, no action necessary. So someone could kind of summarize what this is. Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, I'll try. And we received an email from Dana Davis Brown about this. So a week ago at the health board meeting, we approved a letter to send to the governor about reopening phase two, that stuff, and.
Todd, Councilmember Donovan, the letter that Barry's referring to right now is a different letter.
This is the vaccine letter, right, Dana?
Yes, and that, that heading that you're seeing there, the added by the administration, that goes with the item above on your revision notice. This letter is the letter that council approved to send outside of a formal council meeting.
Right, we'll get to another issue later.
Yeah, we're just adding this so the public knows that you've sent this letter. So it doesn't require any action. It just requires us to place it on the agenda to let people know that what's happened with this letter, and there's a copy that's been attached to a file available for the public to see.
So essentially, alls we had to do is read this agenda item into the record.
Basically, yes.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Donovan?
That letter was addressed to the Secretary of Health, right? Whereas the agenda item says it was a letter to Governor Inslee. I guess it doesn't really matter, but.
The revision notice just says letters sent by council with time constraints. I'm not sure what you're looking at, Todd.
Oh, in legislature, this agenda item says letter to governor, but the letter actually was to Secretary Doctor Muir Shaw of the Health Department.
Oh, okay. Thanks for letting me know. I'll go in and change that.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
Yeah, so when, when we, when I received the first letter in my email, before I even read it, I assumed that it would deal with the vaccination issue. And then in our health board meeting, when I heard the frustration in the voice of both Erica and Dr. Stern, I thought that in the same, you know, thought process, we could send a letter about vaccinations. So as you guys all recall, I asked if we could do that, and Erica volunteered to help. And so a few hours later in my inbox, she sent me a proposed letter and said, go ahead and edit it as you see fit. I read it, and I felt no need to change a single word. And so I forwarded on to Barry and Dana to get it going through the process. So what you guys received in your email was pretty much written by Erica, and I thought it was spot on. I had a, I had a radio interview on it a couple of days later, and, and people asked me to comment on the governor's response to it. And I said, I don't really care what he says about it as long as, as we see some action. And I think with the three thousand two hundred and seventy-five doses we received this week, that's some positive action. So I have to applaud that.
Yep. Other discussion? Okay, well, we'll move on then to introduction items. We have two items to introduce. Is there a motion to, yes?
We had an executive session today.
I'm gonna, I'm not quite there. All those. Two items to introduce. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Move to introduce.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. We'll move on now to committee reports, and I will address what Mr. Donovan was just referring to. This morning, we had a council committee of the whole, an executive session. We had a committee discussion. It was A B twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-three. It was discussion of pending litigation with Civil Deputy Prosecutor George Roche regarding Anderson et al. versus Waukesha County et al. In the U.S. District Court of Western District of Washington, number two twenty dash C V dash oh one one two five. Discussion of this item took place in executive session. So we came out of that, and I think Mr. Donovan has a motion.
Yeah, I do. Sorry for jumping the gun earlier. Yeah, so county council met executive session concerning the lawsuit of Anderson as personal representative of the estate of Kirk Palace et al. versus Waukesha County et al. U S District Court for the Western District, Washington, number two colon twenty dash C V dash oh one one two five pursuant to Waukesha County Code two five six. I move that the council hereby finds the following, that Dr. Stuart Andrews was acting in a manner in which the county had an interest. Dr. Stuart Andrews was acting in the discharge of a duty imposed or authorized by law, and that Dr. Stuart Andrews acted in good faith.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Councilmember Brown, seconds. Discussion?
And I should, to be clear, add to the motion that this is to indemnify Dr. Andrews pursuant to Waukesha County Code, Chapter two point five six.
Okay, discussion? Please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Other committee reports, Councilmember Brown, was there anything else out of finance that you wanted to report?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we had a presentation today from RMC Architects about a preliminary planning work for a future Northwest Annex, which would replace existing Planning and Development Services building. But the significance of this is it's to allow for long-term expansion over the next, you know, next several decades for county facilities and would enable us to consolidate some of our fragmented operations into other buildings up there if we wanted. The plan was to do it in three phases. And then the other side of it that's significant is I think there's a lot of people, myself included, who believe that at some point, the federal government's going to have to engage in stimulus functions that are based on building public infrastructure. And the county, under Mr. Sedu's guidance, is, as I think rightly, starting to get a list of those projects ready, should that funding occur.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The next committee up was the committee of the whole again, which we had a good report from the Health Department. As Mr. Ellenboss mentioned, we, last week, we had only received seven hundred vaccine doses. This week, we're receiving thirty-two, over thirty-two hundred, which was really good news. The Health Department is optimistic that things are moving in the right direction. So we just ask that everybody be diligent, and we'll get through this. We're getting closer. Next committee was Planning and Development Services. Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, we, we discussed the introductory item here, the title fifteen building code update from twenty fifteen building codes to twenty eighteen building codes. And in the discussion, Councilmember Brown had asked that we get a report back from, from Planning and Development Services on the possible increased costs associated with, associated with the new regulations. Did I, Councilmember Brown, did I summarize that in a correct fashion?
Yeah, it was pretty good. Yeah. Citizens' visibility to what the changes are.
Yeah. And so along with that, it was explained to us that because the state requires us to utilize the twenty eighteen, the newest version, I guess, whatever the state adopts of building codes, that we don't really have a choice in the matter. Councilmember Brown correctly pointed out that we want to be as clear and, and open with the process as we can, and having some of those numbers in the discussion only benefits the citizens of Waukesha County, and I agree.
County, Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Ellenboss. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Ms. Dana Brown Davis has reminded me that the item I brought up from finance needed a motion. I guess it was a motion of support and a motion to approve the expenditure. If I remember correctly, it was another thirty thousand dollars. Is that correct, Mr. Schroeder?
Yeah, earlier today, Finance Committee carried a motion three zero to recommend to move forward with option one to full council tonight, and that would be to develop a budget and move forward with the next incremental step of the Northwest Annex for a contract of about thirty thousand dollars and set up some budgeting to move the project forward.
So I move what Mr. Schroeder just said. County, Barry?
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown? Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes unanimously. Other items. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, and sorry, Mr. Ellenboss, if I remember correctly, the committee asked that request, but weren't we going to ask the council to ask that correct request?
Um, I, I guess if we need to, but, um, I, I think, I think you were correct. I understand the argument was can we direct the executive staff to do things? But, um, I think the answer might fall somewhere along the lines of if it helps us do our job. I think it's probably within our, our ability to ask that. So I don't know, maybe the, Dana can weigh in or, or Karen, whether we need the whole council to ask that, or can the committee ask it?
I was busy texting. Sorry, this is Dana Brown Davis. I was busy texting right about the other item. So I actually didn't hear what you were talking about, Ben. Sorry.
Oh, earlier today, we made the requests of PDS staff to, to get back to us with some information in regards to the, to the building code conversation. And I think we voted in committee to have to do that. And, and I think Councilmember Brown's asking now if we need to have the full council vote to ask them to bring that information to us, or if the committee can do that.
I believe because that ordinance hasn't even been introduced. Well, no, you just did introduce it.
Yeah, we just did.
Right. Um, well, you might as well make a motion. Makes it clean.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, and the committee request was a friendly request to the executive to request that staff do this work. As I recall.
Okay, so who's, who's making the formal motion?
Councilmember Brown, you want to make the request?
Uh, the, the request was to take the average, an approximate average value, value of, uh, a building for a house that people are trying to build. Let's say it's, sorry, not value, the average size. Let's, let's say for argument's sake, it was two thousand square feet. And calculate what it would cost to meet the additional energy requirements and then provide a suggestion as to how you could do that, how you could come up with a number of credits required at the most, at the lowest possible cost. So it was, in other words, it was to give visibility what the impact of the legislation was and to give homeowners or prospective homeowners some guidance as to how they could meet that new legislative cost of the lowest cost. So that was the request that they come back with it.
Okay, can we? I'll second that, Mark too.
That was kind of a long motion. Can you, can you put that into a sentence?
Okay. The, the request is to take the, the average size of a house and calculate what is required to meet the new energy code and what that will cost and what the lowest way to achieve that cost would be in terms of the credits. So I'll keep my mouth shut because you want a short sentence.
And you, and that second, you're okay with that, Ben?
Yep.
Okay, discussion. Councilmember Donovan?
I know, to say that I think the discussion in committee, it was, um, pretty clear to PDS staff what Mr. Brown was looking for as a friendly request.
Any other discussion on that? Mr. Ellenboss?
I would concur with both of their, uh, estimations there.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Um, any other, other items? Ms. Frakes?
Hi, um, I just thought I would bring up something that, um, I wanted to call to your attention because it will be coming to you hopefully at some time in the near future. There in the two thousand and nineteen state legislative session, the, um, they adopted what's called the Keep Washington Working Act. And, uh, what that basically does is it made changes to, uh, the extent to which local and state agencies can assist in, uh, uh, can assist federal, the federal government in enforcing immigration laws. And as a part of that legislation, uh, ultimately, uh, many different entities, including Washington, any Washington courthouse has to adopt policies to ensure that they're complying with that law. And a part of the legislation required the A G to develop model policies for public entities, including the courthouses, to use, um, and, uh, frankly, adopt ultimately. Um, and so the, I, I have been struggling with how to de- develop a process to get this before you because it involves involvement by not only the legislative authority, but also the courts and also the executive in our case because it involves issues concerning the operation of the courthouse. And so, um, in the, uh, publication from the A G's office, they suggest that a working committee be put together before it is adopted. And I decided that, uh, you know, I, I, these model policies were adopted in May. And, um, I decided that I should probably just do something. And so I thought it was, um, probably the best thing to contacted, contact the presiding, uh, presiding judges of the district in the Superior Court, the exec's office. And I also included Barry, uh, as possibly, well, I thought he'd be a good representative from the legislative authority because of his interest in law and justice issues. To get this ball rolling and to go over these model policies and raise any issues before it makes its way into a resolution before you. And so I just wanted to let you know that this was going on and you will get this at some point. And hopefully you're okay with this process, uh, and with Barry representing you on this working group. And I, I don't need anything from you. If you don't have any problems with it, I'll just proceed the way I'm going. But I did think it was important to bring it to your attention.
Ms. Kerschner?
Thanks, Karen. Can you please send, um, any information that you have about what it is you're working on so we can review? Thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, Karen?
Oh, I was just gonna say I have a sixty-eight page publication from the A G's office that describes this process in a nutshell.
A sixty-eight page nutshell?
Okay, other, other items. I saw Mr. Bird's hand.
Yeah, uh, is Schroder still on?
I think so.
The, uh, Tyler, I I wonder if maybe you can give me a, or us a quick, uh, rundown on all these emails regarding the marijuana thing. The, uh, no? Okay. I, I, I'm trying to like the Bellevue and now it just like, they, I was trying to piece it all together and stuff and I yeah.
Uh, I, I, so Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive, I could, I can tell you that Mark Personius is the one that's most uh, up to speed, our planning director. I'm assuming Councilmember Ellenboss?
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Oh, I was just gonna suggest that, uh, because I had the same question and I reached out to some people who I thought might know the applicants, um, because I kind of wanted to see the, see the site, maybe. So I could better understand, um, both their application and the complaints. And if, if anybody's interested in doing that, I could, I could get you in touch with the people that I got in touch with.
So I was just gonna go with, I, I'm assuming Councilmember Bird, you're referring to the, um, administrative approval permit out on Mount Baker Highway?
Yeah. Do they have two sites? Is that? Oh, yeah, it, it sounds like the one. Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, Mark Personius did send a email to council kind of laying out, um, where in the application process that applicant is, um, and kind of some background to it. Uh, so Councilmember Bird, maybe referring to that and then reaching out to myself or Mark to talk further into it. The only little bit of caution I would pose is that there is an application at PDS uh, that is an administrative approval application that doesn't require council input. Uh, that's not to say that we're not open to give you some background in, in case you hear from constituents. Uh, but we do kind of have to be somewhat careful of that, uh, permit process and the regulations that go into that. I will forward you that email, Councilmember Bird, and then be happy to talk with you more about it, or any other council members that have questions on it.
All right. Thank you, Tyler.
Okay, any other, other items? Seeing none, what about council member updates? You guys are wonderful. Seven forty-five. Okay.
I'll have to go again.
Oh, Mr. Brown?
I just don't know if there's any interest in taking a collection to buy Barry a haircut.
No.
Yeah, Ben?
I just want to say that I was in the office on Friday and I bumped into Barry as he was coming in and I was going out. And, um, it's even more spectacular in person. So, no, I would donate to that.
I told him the same thing and J- Jennifer told me that Ben had just been in there. We were both kind of floored by seeing the, the beard in person there.
Yeah, it was awesome.
I say, keep rocking it. Don't cut it.
Okay, Rod, you're outvoted.
Well, okay, that's fine. I, I've got, I've got five bucks for you, Barry, there, man.
I'll take the five bucks. I'll probably buy a coffee, but anyway, good job tonight, everybody. Uh, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone. Goodbye.